All right, 30 seconds, stand by. Got quiet off all of a sudden. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for being here for Wednesday, October 4th. Board of Sedgefield County Commissioners, we have a nice audience here and welcome those that are watching on the KPTS and YouTube channel and our Facebook channel. So we'd like to recognize a number of in the crowd that we have that are elected officials. Kathy Bond is here. Kathy, wave. Hazel Stabler, you're here. Hazel, good to see you. Diane Albert is here, yes. And Kelly Beal is the superintendent. Kelly, good to see you always. Thanks for being here. Did I miss anybody? Yes, we did. Ernestine Crable, that's right. My apologies. So thanks for being here. Anybody else? Okay. With that, we will call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk.
Invocation to be led by Hazel Stabler. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you again. That was a first for us and very, very good, very good. So thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. FEMA, in coordination with the FCC, will conduct a nationwide test of the emergency alert system and the wireless emergency alerts today. Julie Stimson of Emergency Management is here to give you a quick overview.
Good morning, Julie. Welcome to the meeting.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Julie Stimson, Sedgefield County Emergency Management. Just as Nicole said, at 1:20, there's going to be a lot of noise. Cell phones will go off if they are turned on. Doesn't matter where you're at. This is a nationwide test. There is a sidebar that I do want to communicate that if folks have the hidden phones that have been issued to them, we do recommend that you turn them off so they do not go off and keep them off for 30 minutes. That's how long the test is expected to last. Not that our phones will go off for 30 minutes, but the signal will be sent out for 30 minutes. From what I understand, you know, some phones have been issued for life safety reasons and if that is going to put you in danger having that phone go off, we do recommend that you turn it off. Everyone else, of course, we recommend to keep them on. This is the same tones that we hear with Amber Alerts, which is kind of the most common way that we actually hear those alerts, but it's going to be very noisy for a short time and it's a necessary test for us to make sure that our emergency systems are working. Radios and televisions will also be impacted. They'll have the test message going across as well. So with that, if there's any questions, I'm here to answer any questions you guys may have.
So if anybody's on a conference call or a Zoom call during that time, everyone on that call.
Yes. Everyone's going to know if you have a cellphone today. So if you're not supposed to have it on you, put it somewhere else.
And that is at?
1:20 Central Time.
1:20 Central Time.
If for some reason there is a lot of severe weather across the country, they do have an alternate date of October 11th, but we'll make that announcement if they do decide to do it at a different time.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Julie. Any questions? Don't see any? Okay.
Thank you, Julie. October is Cyber Security Awareness Month. This is the 20th year recognizing cybersecurity awareness and it has grown into a collaborative effort between public and private industries to enhance cybersecurity awareness, encourage actions by the public to reduce online risk and generate discussion on cyber threats on a national and global scale. The Cyber and the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency put together this short video on four simple steps that everyone can take to stay safe online.
Hey, everybody. I'm Jen Easterly, Director of CISA, America's Cyber Defense Agency, and I want to be the first to wish you a happy Cyber Security Awareness Month. I'm thrilled to get to share with you a little about this year's campaign through this video. This October, we challenge all Americans to help secure our world by adopting four simple steps that everyone can take to stay safe online. First, use strong passwords, meaning long, random, and unique, to each account, and use a password manager to generate them and to save them. Two, one of my personal favorites, enable multi-factor authentication on all accounts that offer it. You need more than a password on your most important accounts like emails, social media, and financial accounts, so enable MFA. Three, recognize and report phishing, as we like to say, think before you click. Be cautious of unsolicited emails or texts or calls asking you for personal information and don't click on links or open attachments from unknown sources. Finally, number four, update your software. In fact, enable automatic updates on your software so the latest security patches just keep your devices continuously up to date. We all have a role to play to secure our world. We can all secure our online accounts by practicing basic cyber hygiene, including the four steps I just mentioned. And let's secure our families by ensuring that our loved ones know what to look for and how to stay safe online. Companies also have a role to play to secure our digital world. CISA is asking tech companies and software developers to secure our businesses and our individual customers by ensuring that their products are secure by design. That way, technology is secure right out of the box and Americans are better protected. We invite families, small and medium businesses, tech providers, government, and international partners, and others to join the campaign and participate in Cyber Security Awareness Month 2023. Learn more by visiting cisa.com.
That is all I have for today and I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, I just have one question. Nicole, what's your mother's maiden name again?
Uh, I can't help you with that.
Okay, thanks for the update.
Sure.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
All right. All right. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Public agenda. We had two people sign up to visit with us on the public agenda. I don't think they want to speak, they want to speak about an agenda item, they want to speak to us. Walt, you're first up. We state your name and address and we have five minutes and the clerk.
Walt Chapel, 3165 North Porter in Wichita, Kansas. It's good to see all your folks again. It's been my first time in your new digs here. It's quite a, quite an round. You got Tom? Good to see you again, sir.
I came specifically to honor this young lady back here, Helen. Thank you so much for the invitation. While I'm here, I wanted to plant a seed. I was watching Ryan on TV here this last week, talking about homelessness. And as you know, this is a big issue in our whole country, actually, around the world. And it's something we can solve at the local level by being compassionate and being kind with one another. Now, we just had it rain last night and I see, as I come down Broadway, people with their blankets out, trying to get them to dry, trying to figure out how to, you know, survive another day. It's not easy to be on the street. We have over 700 of them. I've done the point-on count or the count that we've done every year for several years in working with what was Interfaith Ministries before it's now Humankind. This is going back years, isn't it? Years of time, we've tried to come up with different strategies and yet we don't implement. We come up with plans, but we don't take time to put them into practice. So one of the ideas I wanted to plant in your head was shelter. And we've got a number of strip malls that are vacant. We have Town West that has a bunch of shops that don't have any shopkeepers. We have a need, I think, to put people from the street into shelter where they have an opportunity to stay warm in the winter and cool in the summer. Now, we can provide a number of different services to those people. While they're there, we can have a chance for some counseling, we can have some drug rehab going on, but rather than have to build a building, like you did out here, you bought a building on North Broadway, didn't you, next to the hospital? That was the city, but it's the same concept. If you have to spend $5 million or wait three or four years to build something, in the meantime, those people are still homeless. meantime, those people are still homeless. So take advantage of what we have available in our communities right now, not only in Wichita, but all the small towns. You go down Main Street or some of these different communities around the Sedgwick County, and you'll see many vacant buildings. Sign a lease, rent it, buy it, whatever, but let's get these people off the street. Give them a chance of some dignity. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments? From all I know, we're collectively working on this. It's kind of high on the list, so thanks for, for your statements. Next up is Molly Thompson. Molly Thompson here?
I didn't realize I was on the agenda.
Okay. Well, you signed the sheet, so you just signed. Okay. All right. All right. So motion to receive and file.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of September 6, 2023.
Commissioners, you've had a chance to review the minutes of September 6, and also item B, September 13. Is there any questions, comments, or corrections? And I don't see any, so I'll make a motion to approve items A and B, which is the minutes of the regular meetings of September 6 and September 13.
Second.
Motion and a second. Don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item C, proclamation declaring Indigenous People's Day.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis, will you read the proclamation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. First of all, thank you for the invocation today. We always schedule an invocation, but we don't always have people that can provide one, so that was very unique and very appreciated. Thank you. With that, I'd like to read a proclamation. Whereas Indigenous People's Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native nations to the United Nations-sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in America. And whereas historically, the county has embraced our local Indigenous people's culture, particularly the work of Black Bear Bozen, whose Keeper of the Plains is featured in the county seal, and many of his works are hanging in county offices. And whereas we value the many contributions made to our community through Indigenous people's knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and the deep cultural contributions that has substantially shaped the character and landscape of Sedgwick County. And whereas Sedgwick County encourages businesses, organizations, and public entities to recognize Indigenous People's Day, which shall be used to reflect upon the ongoing struggles of Indigenous people in this land and to celebrate the thriving culture and value of our Indigenous nations add to our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 9, 2023, as Indigenous People's Day in Sedgwick County, and encourage everyone to celebrate the thriving cultures and values of Indigenous people in our county, and strongly encourage them to join communities across America in recognizing and promoting the well-being and understanding of the contributions of our Indigenous communities. Commissioners, everyone has heard this, I make a motion to approve.
Second. It's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
And it's being received by Hazel Stabler, USD 259 board members. Thank you for being here. Thanks for everyone for being here.
Morning, Hazel.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Hazel Stabler, and I'm honored to be here today to accept the Sedgwick County Commissioners' first Indigenous People's Day proclamation. Our great state of Kansas was named after the Kanza, or Kahl tribe, the people of the South Wind. You can go anywhere in Kansas, and you will see the influence of the tribes that have lived on this land. Named after the Wichita tribe, Wichita has a deep historical history with many different tribes. We, as Indian people, are especially proud of Black Bear Bozen's Keeper of the Plains. It is strategically located at the confluence of the little and big Arkansas rivers. Because of our unique geographic location, Wichita has been a meeting place that is well-known by all tribes in the vast Plains area. It is a place where you could expect hospitality and exchange of gifts and ideas, a place that has cemented relationships throughout history. I am a Native Kansan. I am Yaki and Ojibwe, and I have spent my life sharing my culture through fashion. My children are members of the Wichita tribe, the Kechai clan, and have been taught traditional Wichita ways. I am currently on the USD 259 Wichita School Board. Every day, we should think about and celebrate our country's beginnings and honor the legacy of our ancestors. As the largest school district in Kansas, we have over 1,500 Native students of various tribes who represent a historic and unique population. For centuries, we have educated our children through ceremony, storytelling, and observation. I believe that it is imperative that we teach our children the contributions their ancestors have made throughout history in public service, entrepreneurship, scholastics and the arts, and countless other fields. Sitting Bull, a famous Lakota leader, wisely stated, "Let us put our minds together and see what life we can make for our children." This proclamation is historic. Recognition is important, as is public commitment in establishing positive relationships and initiatives that will inspire accurate, authentic Native American history. I'd like to thank USD 259 for being represented here today and for their continued support of Native students. I'd like to thank all friends and family for being here, and I'd especially like to thank my Native partners and family who have come here from far and wide today to support the Sedgwick County Commissioners endeavors, endeavors, excuse me, to recognize all Indigenous people. And I'd like to also say that, I'd like to tell everyone that we're still here. Thank you.
Hazel, and the other, I don't know if there's any comments first, but, but there, there's, due to the number of people, usually take a photograph, but we have three proclamations today. We've got a number of people here, so after the third one, we will take a short recess, go right outside and take a photograph. So, okay. But any other questions or comments about this? Commissioner Howe?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You may not want to go way too far, because we may want to talk to you for just a second, but number one, I just want to say, I appreciate you personally. I've gotten to know you over the last few years especially, and not only I think you're a wonderful school board member for our, our students and our community. Thank you for serving in that role, but you've also opened my eyes to the culture that you represent today. And I, I love you as a, as a, as a ambassador for the Native American people in our country. Thank you for what you, what you do to educate us and to help us understand. I sincerely appreciate you. I want to just also share, Hollis has been great as well. I see others in the audience I know are here to support you, and I'm looking forward to that picture. But I just want to say, you have been tremendous. You're a great person in so many ways, but your ambassadorship to open our eyes and educate us and help us understand, your perspective has been tremendous. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Hazel. Don't see any other comments. Okay. Next item, please.
Item D, proclamation declaring Junior League of Wichita Appreciation Week.
Commissioner Lopez.
Okay. Whereas Junior League of Wichita was established in 1925, is, and is an organization of women committed to advancing women's opportunities for leadership and meaningful community impact through volunteer action, collaboration, and training. And whereas Junior League of Wichita has been the driving force behind the kinds of investments, initiatives, and institutions that make Sedgwick County a healthier, more vibrant community, including the Pride of the Plains exhibit at Sedgwick County Zoo, revitalization of Heritage Square Park, establishment of the Baby Mobile Outreach Program with the Wichita Children's Home, and partner in the expansion of the Child Advocacy Center. And whereas Junior League of Wichita is hosting the 18th Annual Holiday Galleria to raise funds to fulfill their current initiative of empowering women to be safe, smart, and successful by offering assistance with connecting women with life-saving resources, financial literacy education, providing scholarships to advanced learning, professional development opportunities, and mentorship. And whereas Junior League of Wichita's core value of diversity, collaboration, community investment, leadership, respect, and service enable all women in Sedgwick County to serve as a catalyst for lasting change within their community. Now therefore, be it resolved that Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 1 through 7, 2023, as Junior League of Wichita Appreciation Week in Sedgwick County, and encourage all citizens to express our appreciation by supporting Junior League of Wichita by attending the 2023 Holiday Galleria held on October 5 through 7 at Century 2 Expo Hall. So with that, I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second that. Any other questions, comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
And to accept is Stephanie McCurdy. She is the Chair of Holiday Galleria this year.
Good morning, Stephanie. Welcome to the meeting.
Good morning. Thank you. Thank you to our Sedgwick County Commissioners for bestowing on us this proclamation today. Thank you for all of your service with the Junior League of Wichita and championing many of our product work and what that looks like for our community. Since the Junior League is Wichita's inception in 1925, thousands of women have served the greater Wichita area as volunteers. These women represent all walks of life with the common goal of serving our community and developing the potential as women. Our current focus area, voted by our membership in April of 2022, will now focus on empowering women to be safe, smart, and successful. Our largest fundraiser of the year is upon us. Holiday Galleria, a day of shopping, a year of giving, is the Junior League of Wichita's annual upscale shopping event with more than 100 regional and national merchant vendors. The 18th Annual Holiday Galleria is scheduled for this weekend, October 5 through 7 at Century 2 Expo Hall. The objective of Holiday Galleria is to raise funds to fulfill the Junior League of Wichita's goal for building a better community. Lastly, we would like to recognize and welcome Commissioner Sarah Lopez as the newest member of the Junior League of Wichita's class of 2023. We hope to see you all this weekend at Holiday Galleria. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. It's, it's been an honor to, when I was at the city, I, I was able to participate and help kick off your, this event, and thank all you ladies for all the time and effort you do to put that in. Sarah, did you have another comment?
Yes.
Okay, Sarah.
Thank you all for being here today. So, as Stephanie mentioned, I did just join the Junior League, and I'm very excited because you guys have done so much work in our community that's just been phenomenal. I mean, I've listed a few things, but the Pride of the Plains exhibit at Sedgwick County Zoo is just one of my favorites that my kids have always loved, and I love that you guys were a part of it. As we're looking at the 100th anniversary, what we're going to be doing is, Junior League has pledged $2 million for the Exploration Place EP project, so another really great legacy to leave. And so I'm just, I'm grateful that I get to be a part of everything that you guys have been doing for so long, and appreciate all of you being here and to share this moment with us.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? I don't see any. Thanks again, then we'll do a photograph after the next one. So, next item, please.
Item E, proclamation declaring Walktober.
Yes. Commissioner Beatty.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Proclamation of Sedgwick County, Kansas. Whereas experts agree that physical activity is one of the most important things Americans can do to improve their health. And the World Health Organization, the Center for Disease Control, the American Heart Association, and others recommend youth get 60 minutes of physical activity each day, and adults get 150 minutes of physical activity each week. And whereas, the Health and Wellness Coalition, in collaboration with community partners, has deemed the month of October as Walktober, which is designed for everyone, from inactive individuals to those already making great strides towards better health. Anyone can step it up and be successful with a school weather walking program. And whereas, walking is a great way to get the physical activity needed to obtain health benefits. Walking does not require any special skills. It also does not require a gym membership or expensive equipment. And whereas, walking is the simplest positive change you can make to effectively improve your heart health, and can also help maintain a healthy body weight and reduce the risk of chronic diseases and stress-related illnesses. And whereas, the Health and Wellness Coalition of Wichita, in collaboration with Bike Walk Wichita, City of Wichita Park and Rec, Exploration Place Park Run, K-State Research and Extension Center of Sedgwick County, and Uplift Healthy Lifestyle are all encouraging residents to participate in Walktober activities, which are listed at hwcwichita.org. Now therefore, be it resolved that Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Walktober in Sedgwick County, and we encourage citizens to add walking as a part of their daily routine. So with that, Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the proclamation as read.
Okay. I'll second. Any other questions? Don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
And Chairman, this proclamation is being accepted by Shay Rowe, the health educator for the Sedgwick County Health Department.
Good morning.
All right. Good morning. Thank you, Chairman Meitzner, and members of the Board of Health. As you've mentioned, I am a health educator with the Sedgwick County Health Department, and I'm thrilled to be involved with this initiative. It was started by the Health Department way back in 2008, and I'm very glad to still be able to contribute to this effort, even though it's moved outside of the county's auspices. I am accepting this proclamation not only on behalf of myself and the Sedgwick County Health Department, but on behalf of the following community partners that assisted in the planning, Bike Walk Wichita, Kim Neufeld is here today for them, K-State Research and Extension, Exploration Place, the Health and Wellness Coalition, Shelley Rich is here for them today as well, City of Wichita Park and Recreation, and Uplift Healthy Lifestyle. As already mentioned in the proclamation itself, Walktober is a free, community-wide physical activity initiative, which encourages you to engage in the recommended 30 minutes of activity five or more days of the week. Walking is a perfect way to meet that goal, and as mentioned, Walktober has been celebrated in our community since 2008, started by the Sedgwick County Health Department Health Promotion Program. There are a few events I would like to highlight while I have the podium. Every Wednesday, Bike Walk Wichita hosts a Walking Wednesday series. We have a Walktober Club on Strava, which I encourage you to check out, and we have a Facebook group as well. Again, thank you for the opportunity to accept this proclamation, and I hope each of you will go to hwcwichita.org. That's hwcwichita.org to sign up for Walktober and see our full list of events. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. Commissioner Beatty?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman, and thank you Shay for sharing some of those thoughts and all the activities and events we have coming. This is really creative. Walktober, I think, is a really creative opportunity to share that physical fitness does matter for the health of a community. And outside of just the health benefits and the community benefits that I believe that physical exercise brings, it's also something to be said that, you know, with all the downtown development that's happening, we have biomed campus coming with 3,000 med students and staff coming downtown Wichita. There's something to be said when you have a downtown that's vibrant and full of people with energy and walking around, multimodal opportunities in the community. So as we continue to progress in our downtown community, all of Sedgwick County certainly, but in our downtown community, it's fun to see people out moving around and having events that we promote that active lifestyle. So appreciate you being here today, and I appreciate the opportunity to proclaim Walktober in October. So.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Very good. And Commissioner Lopez.
Real quick, I just want to say, personally, I'm looking forward to doing some of these events. And I want to say that Exploration Place might be called Park Run, but you can walk. Tanya Cole and I went not too long ago and brought the babies, and obviously you can't run with a wagon, so we were able to walk it, and they stayed with us the whole time and let us do it at our pace. So it doesn't have to be running there, so please, I encourage everyone to get out and walk with Exploration Place for their park run as well. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, I don't see any. So for the audience that's watching, we're going to take just a few minutes and we're going to recess for just a few minutes, go take a few pictures. It shouldn't be more than about five or 10 minutes, and we'll be back in about 10 minutes. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. And, and, the, the, the other thing is, is the, the governor, the governor right now, she just needs to go and go like, yeah. It's, it's just. How you doing, sir? Morning, sir.
Hey, how are you doing?
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't even say hi to you, sir.
Yeah, well, I didn't have the meeting started.
You walked in after the meeting started and went, oh geez, I wanted to say hello to you. So. Well, I, I'm, I'm like going, to, to Kelly, I'm like going, why can't everything just be, and, you know, everybody just go on what needs to be done, done. And get it done. They just, it, it's, it's, it's. I just have to be somewhere around 11:30. Better not be, or I'll, I'll be like going, what the heck, come on, time, time. Get, get the work done, baby. Let's go.
Where's Junior League? Would Junior League please come to the podium? Oh, you are? Okay. Communications Department, I think we're live. Okay. Well, we returned from recess, so we will continue on. And next item, please.
Appointments. Item F, accept the resignation of Deborah Jo Miller from the Cedric County Animal Care Advisory Board.
Okay, Mr. Wagner. Good morning.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Justin Wagner, County Counselor. This item is a resignation of Deborah Jo Miller from the Cedric County Animal Care Advisory Board. She's tendered her resignation and the recommended action is to accept that resignation.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. I want to thank Deborah Jo Miller for her service on the Animal Control Advisory Board over the past several years. I appreciate her very much. Unfortunately, she's unable to continue. That does provide an opening, so if anyone is interested in serving on the Animal Control Advisory Board, please let us know and we'd be happy to appoint you. But again, thanks to Deborah Jo Miller. I sincerely appreciate her. I move that we accept the resignation.
Second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item G, resolution reappointing Dr. Ronald Varner to the Cedric County Regional Forensic Science Center Advisory Board.
Okay. Mr. Wagner?
Yes, Chairman, if it's okay with you, I propose taking Items G and H together. They're both appointments to the same advisory board.
Okay.
Item G is a resolution reappointing Dr. Ronald Varner to the Cedric County Regional Forensic Science Center Advisory Board, and Item H is a resolution reappointing Police Chief Daryl Atterbury to the same advisory board. For background purposes, this board was created to enhance communication between the Forensic Science Center and its various stakeholders. They help advise the Forensic Science Center on a number of matters and it consists of 14 members. Two of the members are appointed by the Board of County Commissioners, the other 12 positions are standing members with defined positions. Both of these are reappointments. Dr. Varner is the representative for an organization outside of the county doing business with the Forensic Science Center. He is the coroner in Butler County. And then also we have, again, Bel Air's, City of Bel Air's Police Chief, Daryl Atterbury, is being reappointed to law enforcement officer of a second or third-class city position. The recommended action is to approve both of these resolutions.
Okay, thank you. If there's any questions, I don't see any, so I'll make a motion that we approve Dr. Varner and Chief Atterbury to this Regional Forensic Science Advisory Board. Motion in a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Howe. I mean, Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And I don't believe either one of them are here to be sworn in. Okay, they'll be sworn in later. Next item, please.
New business. Item I, Appraiser's Office Update.
Mr. Clark, do I, before you start, do I owe an apology to the public? Because I, I thought this was maybe your annual report and...
This is not the annual report.
Right.
It's just an update of where the office is and also...
Mark, just in case if anybody was tuning in to watch what I had announced yesterday that this might have been your annual report, my apologies to the public for such, so...
That is fine. Good morning, Commissioners. Today I will be giving an update on the Appraiser's Office. It will give you an indication of where the market currently is and what I'm looking at for the near future. I can inform you that the Appraiser's Office is in substantial compliance for 2023 with an overall score of 91%. That takes quite a bit of work to achieve that. There are two sections of the annual compliance audit. The first is the 2022 ratio study results. And yes, I did say the 2020, the 2022 ratio results because you're taking 2022 sales and you're comparing them to the 2022 values. The second part of that is the 23 statutory and procedural compliance portion of the audit, and we made a perfect score on the 2023 statutory and procedural audit. However, the, the ratio study did present some challenging, some challenges. The residential median ratio, our office scored 88.6%, but we are in compliance with the upper confidence interval and we got to 90%. That is very good. It is low, but nonetheless, we are in. On the commercial median ratio, our office scored an 81.8 and the upper confidence interval was 88.1, which is not in compliance, and that there is a problem. The residential and commercial markets were hot, they ran away from us, and since our office did not meet the commercial compliance ratio standard, KSA 79, 1495, that's an important statute to remember, becomes operational. PVD will contract with a third-party fee appraisal firm to perform appraisals on at least 1% of the commercial properties in Cedric County. That's going to be between 130 and 140 appraisals. That's going to be expensive. I can tell you that on October the 9th, there will be a joint session of the Assessment and Taxation Committee in Topeka, and I believe this maybe will be one of the topics because I can tell you, I don't like the statute. PVD doesn't like the statute. Senator Tyson doesn't like the statute, and I believe there is opposition in the House to it as well. So it appears that there is some unifying thought that this statute should go away. The problem is, in the next legislative session, it, I believe that is a gut and go session. You open this up and what we don't want is for somebody to come in. Counties aren't sometimes liked, county appraisers' office isn't sometimes liked, imagine that, and we don't want it to be changed, the language changed, so that counties would have to pay for these appraisals. So we want this thing to die. We want it to go away. Also, I can tell you that it is rather upsetting that we didn't make commercial ratio, but nonetheless, we had some things that went against us. We, we have people paying absorbent prices for commercial property. You have a lot of foreign investors that want to protect their money and they are buying real estate here. But one of the things that really caused the problem for us was during this particular time when you had this sales ratio section, looking at this, PVD lost 75% of its workforce strength in the ratio division. Their head statistician decided that he would retire, and when he did that, the director had to pull in additional resources from his other sections in PVD, and it was a real challenge. So usually we have back and forth between our office and PVD, and they have a shortage of resources as well. Then you lose some of your big institutional knowledge and the director said, we have to cut it off now. We had given lots of information and also appealed quite a few of the sales ratios on the commercial side, and we thought from our internal statistics that we would be in compliance. However, there was no back and forth, and I understand PVD's position. We don't have the resources to do this. They, they, they went as long as they could. They're also on a timeline and they just cut it, and this is where we wound up at. So I can tell you that for 2024, we do have representation on the Sales Ratio Committee. We will want some changes. However, we will have to negotiate with some of the smaller counties because they have different issues with the sales ratio study as well. So it's going to be interesting, but we have work to do, and that's the way I'm going to look at this. I, I'm going, I can look at it as the glass is half-full or it's half-empty, and I think this is an opportunity for us to keep working, get our commercial ratios where they're at, and I'm just going to look at it as a positive issue. I don't like that we're not in compliance there, but it is what it is. Now, just so that we understand on the sales ratio what some of this stuff is, the median ratio is the number, middle number in a sorted, in a sorted array of data points. What is the COD, coefficient of dispersion? Well, that is a measure of horizontal equity. So say, and it's measured between, you have five and 20. So you have your sales ratios on a horizontal line. Anything that is below five or above 20, you know you have issues and therefore you're going to have to take some corrective action there. That is basically the COD. The PRD is the price-related differential, and that is a measure of vertical equity, and that is between .98 and 1.03. If you go beyond 1.03, you're being more regressive. So take, for example, you have your high-priced properties up here, you have your low-priced properties here, down here, you want to make sure that low-priced properties are not being overappraised relative to the high-priced properties. If that happens, you're being regressive. You do not want... You do not want to be regressive. That is the death knell for a property tax system. You do not want that. So here's some history for you. The residential median history, as you can tell, it goes to 2022, and with the upper confidence level, we are at ninety percent. So we are in compliance. Now let's look at the commercial. Commercial has always been a challenge, and this time, not even with the upper confidence interval, did we get in, and that is a problem that will be rectified. Now, the IWA audit that we did several years ago indicated that we needed to do more internal ratio studies, and we are. And if you look at this, we're running full file on both the residential and commercial. Of course, when PVD does it, they run full file on commercial, but they sample residential. I like running full file. You can tell that there are, there is some work to do there. In this type of environment right now, you have validated sales and you have unvalidated sales. In other words, we are nowhere close to being finished with validating sales at this point. And so we know that there are some, some things that need to be kicked out of this ratio study, and we'll be looking at that, but it looks like it is better than last year's. In fact, if a commissioner was to ask me, what does that same study right there look like in 2022, I would tell you that it is improved. So that is a good sign.
I was just going to ask that.
Well, I've got the numbers right here. For the median ratio in 2022, we had seventy-nine point four. We're at eighty-two point eight. For the COD, we were eleven point one. We're at twelve point nine. We're still in there, doing good. For the PRD, we're at point nine nine. Commercial, last year, 2022, we were seventy-six point one. We are at a seventy-four point nine. However, I believe that that, that is acceptable, but if you look at that COD, last year, we were at twenty-two point six, and now we're at twenty. Last year, we were at one oh six on the PRD and one oh eight on the PRD now. There are some things in there that we need to kick out in order to clean up that commercial file, even the residential file. And as we continue to validate sales, those numbers will continue to increase, like the residential forty-two seventy-eight and the commercial two oh five. Those numbers will get better, and then your statistics will get more robust. I am confident that we will be in commercial compliance next year, and we will be in residential compliance as well. Also, I look at this 2020...
Mark, can you hold on one second?
Can we ask questions as we go?
Oh, sure.
Or you want to just go back to the end?
You can ask whatever you want.
On that slide that we're on right now, so that single number, like eighty-two point eight, is that a, that is a sample?
That isn't a sample. That, that is running full file, and basically, you're measuring the median. You have all of your, your, your statistics, and basically, you've ran your sales ratio, and you have ratio for each cell, and that is the middle number.
Okay, so the middle number is eighty-two point eight?
Right.
What is the range below that? Eighty-two point two to eighty-three point two? What is that telling me?
Those are the upper, those are the lower and upper confidence intervals, ninety-five percent confidence intervals.
Okay, but our goal is what number?
Ninety.
Ninety, that's what I thought, okay. So this is, curiously, so the last ratio study, we had our annual presentation, was quite a bit different. What has changed to... That was, that was a sample analysis versus full file?
That was the PVD mid-year, and there, they are sampling on the residential. On the commercial, they run full file, because we really don't have enough to sample.
So is this, being out of compliance, going to trigger some type of correction in our future appraisal process for the, maybe the following year, some type of adjustment to in our, in our processes to cause us to be a little more close to ninety percent?
The, yes and no. Remember that I, I just reported that for 2023, we made a perfect score on the statutory and procedure process portion of the audit. PVD is confident that we know what we're doing, we're confident in our processes, et cetera. These are difficult markets right now to value, and, and people, there are some that say, well, the best way to do that is just jump those values up there. And I tend to think we can do it a little calmer, a little better, and, and not take the hammer and beat these people, you know, to a pulp. I think that there is a better way of just keep working at it. We will raise values, but you don't have to go out there and raise them thirty percent. I mean, that, that is, no.
One other question on the, on the commercial side. I guess there is a, a few different methods of appraisal. I, I don't know, when you guys do the analysis, is it use the same method that was used by the appraiser on that particular commercial property?
We are basically taking the appraisal and, and looking at it, dividing that by the sale price, getting a ratio, and yes, you have income, you've got cost, and you have a market estimate, but the bottom line is our sales estimate. We are doing, using the same methodologies as we go through on these ratios.
All right, thank you, Chairman.
Also, I'd like to say that this report, the 2023 internal compliance sales ratio, is a true representation of our residential and commercial markets as of today. I think that is, is very important to state. Sales status, all properties.
All right. One more question, Mark. One more question, Commissioner Dennis.
Mark, I appreciate you being here and giving us a heads up, because it's a little bit of a change from what we heard last time on the, on the overall valuation that you brief us on each year. But the majority of the emails I get whenever the, the tax bills are sent out, and especially when the, the recent notice for revenue-neutral rate were sent out, was the value of the homes and the businesses. And so I, I just want to make sure that everyone's clear that the evaluation that you're seeing is actually below what the actual value of a lot of homes and a lot of businesses are. That's what you're trying to tell us, right?
Yes.
Okay, so a lot of people think they're overvalued.
Understand.
But again, if they do believe that they're overvalued, they, we have an appeals process for that.
Yes, we do.
But in reality, because of the markets today, the value of homes and the value of, of commercial property is much higher than it was in the past, so they're going to see an increase in their valuation in the future. That, that's kind of a Cliff Notes version of what you're trailing us, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no other questions right now, so go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Sales status, all properties. Well, as you can see, this goes from two thousand to, to two thousand twenty-three. The first bar is your total sales, and the second bar under, above each year is your year-to-date sales, and year-to-date would be as of the end of August twenty twenty, end of August, based on the particular year. And the, that red line is your five-year pre-pandemic line, and due to higher interest rates, it has definitely had an impact on the sales. However, you know, and the sales are down about seventeen percent from what they were last year. Nevertheless, the ratio, not the ratio, the sales are above the pre-pandemic line. So if there's something to take away from this, this is an active market, it's still climbing, and for 2023, you don't see two bars there, because we don't know what the total is for the year yet. However, you know that, that we are closing in on that pandemic line, and we are going to surpass that. So it, it's going to be a very interesting year when it comes to valuation. All right. This does not include roofing, siding, or towers, because those basically don't, typically don't add value. However, as of the end of August, permits are down due to high interest rates, yet they are above the five-year pandemic line. So that is another indication that we have a very active market and that things are looking up. New dwelling permits. This here is for single-family homes, duplexes, triplexes, and quadruplexes. New dwelling permits are down due to high interest rates, but remain above the five-year pandemic line. And all of this data is of nine twenty-five, twenty twenty-three. Cedric County median sales price. Now this one here...
Mark, excuse me.
Quick question.
Ryan Beatty?
I have a lot of conversations about housing, affordable housing in the community right now. I've heard you say on a couple of occasions that you felt like we were short in Cedric County. I've heard a number as high as fifty thousand units.
Right.
Are, is that still a number that you, you're communicating?
Yes.
So we're short fifty thousand, and, and that's just based on market supply versus demand, or is that just...
That imbalance is still there.
A ratio based on population? Is that how you calculate that?
Well, basically, that's a number that has been put out, and I didn't come up with a number.
Okay.
That is something that industry has been saying for a while, it's between twenty-five and fifty thousand.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm still using that number. I just wanted to make sure that I have your...
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
All right. Cedric County median sales price. This one just continues to, to go up. If you look at that median sales price, it is two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And so when you look at that, prices are, are, are high, and they continue to climb. And, and so people saying, well, high interest rates, everything is going to go to pot. People are getting acclimated to, to, to the higher-interest-rate environment. True, the number of transactions has, has, has gone down, but, I mean, that imbalance right there, that's evidence that, that it's, it's, it's still going up. Those interest rates may overshadow the imbalance, but it doesn't make it go away. Cedric County median days on the market. At the end of August twenty twenty-three, median days on the market was six days, and that is the same as it was in August twenty twenty. So if you look at that dark line with the round circle with the dots, and then you see the more golden speckled line, and look at August, I mean, right there, you're right there. So, I mean, it's very interesting. So let's look at this. Cedric County median percent asking price. Now this one here is an interesting one. In most cases, sellers are getting full asking price, and in some cases, they're getting full asking price plus a premium. Take, for example, your sales range of fifty thousand to seventy-four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine. I mean, in the month of April, and in the month of June, and in the month of August, you're getting full sales price plus a premium. That is an indication of the strength of this market. It, it continues to, to go. True, you've got high interest rates. Once again, the number of transactions are coming down, but there are areas out there where you're still getting premiums. Prices remain high, and the residential market is resilient. High interest rates have reduced the number of transactions again, but the market is active. Cedric County median days on the market by asking price. Now, you look at that red line there, and that is a reference point that we have on there. But if you, if you look at that, and then you say, well, most transactions are below that five-day line. I mean, things are selling rather, rather quickly, and so buyers, they're, they're getting acclimated to that high interest, higher interest rate environment, but also, some buyers are settling for less house because they want a smaller payment, and so that's how some people are dealing with the higher interest rate. So people still want homes. Now this slide here is, is a slide that is really interesting. It is the real property percent of assessed value by class. In that first column, that is your residential. In the fourth column, that's your commercial. Note that this is twenty fifteen through twenty twenty-three, and through, twenty fifteen through twenty twenty-three, you can see that the residential continues an upward slope. And for twenty fifteen through twenty twenty-three, you can see the commercial continues to have a downward slope. When we looked at this, we, we, we analyzed this and wondered, okay, there's people that have all kinds of, of, you know, thoughts on this, and I think one reason why this is such a, when people see this and the eyes pop, is because the residential people feel it so much. There's a primary factor that creates this situation, along with a second factor of lesser significance. Number one, the residential market is significantly stronger than the commercial market in terms of sales and valuation. The residential market has one hundred and eighty-two thousand one hundred and nine parcels, which represents seventy-five percent of the parcels in Cedric County. The commercial market has fourteen thousand six hundred and forty-nine parcels, which represents approximately six percent of all the parcels. So if you're looking at this, and you're saying, well, why is that? Well, then if you look at it in terms of that, what I just said, it makes sense. If you're talking about seventy-five percent of the parcels has that kind of value on it, I mean, it's going to keep going up. The commercial parcels are going to slide down in, relatively slide down in proportion to the number of total parcels. However, the second reason is economic development incentives, your IRBs and your EDXs. Our analysis shows that if you subtract two percent from the, the residential property and add it to the commercial property, and you do that for each of the years there, that approximately gives you the impact of what those economic development incentives are. Personal property accounts. Now this data is as of nine twenty-five, twenty twenty-three, and there are three bars for each year. First bar will be CVN, that's your value notice. Then you have your June certification date, and then you have your tax rule. As you can see, those personal property accounts continue to grow, and for 2023, we have a double asterix. That double asterix means that we have not yet got a final total for the tax rule yet, and even though it says that we're at roughly thirty-six thousand six seventy-five, we may very well pass thirty-seven thousand. Boats and items of individual personal property on Schedule Six of the Personal Property Rendition are being prorated as of one one twenty-three, and that is a new piece of legislation, so it is having an impact. Personal property accounts by type. Once again, you see the double asterix on twenty twenty-three, so there's going to be some minute curve bending there as numbers change for 2023, but nonetheless, the takeaway here is... But nonetheless, the takeaway here is that the business accounts continue, they continue to erode. They're in decline. Individual personal property and watercraft continue to decline. And then when you have things such as oil and gas and other types of, like farm and 1620M and aircraft, they keep relatively steady. However, those IPP, your individual personal property, and your boats, they continue to climb. And when it comes to boats, it's like you're sprinkling miracle gruel on those things. I mean, it seems like everybody has a boat. And then they like to sell them, and then they like to go buy another one. Assessed valuation breakdown. Now, this is real, personal, and state assessed. As you can tell, at the bottom of those bars and ascending, inclining is the real property. It is increasing. Personal property is decreasing. Even though I just said we're having more and more accounts, that is continuing to erode, that value. And that's because on your CIME, and that is your commercial industrial machinery and equipment accounts, you've got some big value on there that's older than 2006. And as that erodes, that percentage of personal property gets smaller. Then you have your state assessed, and that is relatively steady. So as you can see, the real property, it keeps getting hit more. And since you have, you know, more residential accounts, you're going to have more of those residential people saying, help, and I understand. Appraiser's office equalization. Now, people say, what is this? Of course, you know, equalization appeals are generated through your real property value You have a total of, down at the bottom, you can see there is total, there's heard and percent heard. Well, the total is the number of appeals that were filed. And the heard is the number of appeals that we actually conducted. And you say, well, why is there a difference there? Well, some applicants do not participate in their appeal. In other words, they were no-shows. If they were supposed to physically come into the office, or they didn't answer the phone, and when we do a phone appeal, we call three times, nobody picked up. Or they didn't call to reschedule their appointment, which you can do, and it's in writing, they can do that. Or, and this is the one that's really interesting, some, in some cases, applicants voluntarily cancel their appeal. Now, in law, if you cancel your appeal, you are totally out of the hearing process for the entire year. You can't get back in.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. You gave us a couple of stats here, but what are the numbers that you agreed with the appeal?
That I can get to you. I do not have that one, but we will get you those today.
Okay, thank you.
Appraiser's office all sales average days. Now, the red line there is what we're supposed to achieve per PVD and statute. Once an SVQ, self-validation questionnaire, comes into our office, and it is entered into our Ryan Kama system, Kama being computer-assisted mass appraisal system, we have 60 days to validate that sale. As you can tell, that green line up there, that average line, we are way off the mark. As you can see, it started declining, and in 2020, we started a new methodology, which was approved by PVD, that allows counties to use pre-validation process to invalidate SVQs on the, based on the information on the face of the SVQ. And if we do that, we don't have to go to the field. Now, you say, oh gee, why don't you invalidate all of them? No, we can't do that because PVD is going to be checking, and then we're going to get in trouble. So we can't do that. But nonetheless, as you can see, that number is steadily improving, but it's taking time. But as you can also see at the bottom, the percent left under 21 and 22. We still have a quarter of the sales in both of those years, a little more than a quarter, to make that up, to finish actually doing the validation process on that. And 2023, we're going after it, but there's lots of work to do. Validating sales and going to the field takes personnel, it takes a lot of time, and it takes a lot of expertise. You can't just go and validate sales. There are actual classes that you have to take, there are tests you have to pass, and so that is the reason why we have our most senior people doing that. Appraiser's office organizational chart. Now, I want to take a few minutes to update you on the organizational changes that have taken place in my office. Note that there is an old org chart, and there is a new org chart. The new organizational chart provides greater efficiency and effectiveness in our processes. All right. So what's the rationale for changing all of this? Well, the rationale is quite simple. Create functional work groups, and also what that allows is that those functional work groups can be very neatly placed into the correct fund centers. Also, all land, for an example, that would be all land processes answered to a single project leader. And as you can see, we now have a land records division, and that project leader will handle the land processes. It allows for greater sustainability. It allows for training of all processes in each work group. It provides for better management of processes. The current PVD valuation division has compliance requirements, and they are changing those compliance requirements often. And two of the ones that we really are striving to get a handle on and do much better with, and they are continuing to beef up these two, would be the fiscal onsite inspections for all sales validations and data collection entry and the collection quality assurance standards. Take, for example, when it comes to your data entry into the Kama system, in years past, it was a 2% error rate. Now, they have moved that to a 1% error rate. And there are processes to check that, they have queries to check that, they have all kinds of fun things and hoops to make us jump through. So we look forward to meeting compliance standards. Future PVD compliance requirements will only get tougher, and state mandates will become... There's going to be a lot going on, because when you look at the 2024 legislation, which is hanging out there, we just don't know what's going to happen. But we, as we have always been told, and by the person, by the appraiser who hired me, Jerry Franz, always said, the only thing that is constant in a county appraiser's office is change. And that is a very true statement. Also, the rationale provides for better accountability within each work group, and it prepares the office for future implementation of additional concepts, such as tiered staffing and sustainability, as we have talked about a lot, succession planning, and also so that we can have a better handle when people leave the office, having somebody prepared to step up into that position. There is nothing more painful than watching people walk out the office and you lose your institutional knowledge. That is pain. And yes, we've experienced that. I've also watched PVD experience that, and that is something that definitely needs to be worked on, and we are working on it, and we're making some very good strides. I can tell you, we worked very hard with HR. We have written every job description, and we benefited from the Evergreen Study and working with HR. And I just want to thank the commissioners for having the courage to say the compensation was important along with the county manager. Thank you very much. Now, recommended actions. Well, I recommend that you receive and file this presentation. Also, on the consent agenda, there's item L that will be presented shortly. I would ask that you approve that. Basically, those are two positions reclassified. One of them will be the residential senior data analyst, and the other is the residential data collection manager. Finally, I'd like to thank my staff for its hard work and its professionalism. It has been a difficult year. I'm very proud of you. To the BOCC commissioners, thank you for your support. It's very much appreciated. It's very important to me. To the county manager, county manager's office, the county council's office, human resources and finance and their staffs, thank you for your support and assistance. That concludes the presentation. I'll stand for any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Commissioner Beatty.
Thank you, Chairman. Mark, thanks for the presentation. There's a lot of data to chew on here, so I'll review in more detail and probably email over and maybe give you a call for some other questions. But you alluded to something, and I think it's pertinent for the season that we're in right now at BOCC, where we're working on our legislative agenda, where we're going to start having conversations with the state and legislators about things that we think that are of interest for Cedric County and our constituents. There's been a lot of speculation about what could come in lieu of either legislation or even a proposed constitutional amendment about limiting the appraised, year-to-year appraised value increases or assessed value increases. In my purview, that seems very dangerous because it creates even more artificial gap between a market rate and a county appraised or assessed value rate. And I don't think that's healthy. But as we're talking about potential legislative agenda, are there other reasons we should be aware of as to why we shouldn't support or should, or are there other avenues to accomplish what the state's going to try to do for our constituents in regards to limitations? I just want to make sure we fully understand what we should be advocating for in a legislative agenda.
Well, you're absolutely right when it comes to, you know, making an artificial gap between what the market is and then what is done legislatively. That's, in my opinion, that's dangerous. I mean, as the market continues to increase, you have people that are going to want to make improvements to their homes and et cetera. The bottom line is, it's going to be capped at, they say, 4%. That is going to keep people from wanting to improve their homes. At the same time, Senator Tyson called me. She was very nice. She didn't think I knew who she was, but I really did know who Senator Tyson was. And I think we had, it was brief, but I think we had a good conversation. And I told her another reason would be because of FEMA. I mean, they're going to use that official appraised value to, you know, reimburse people. And so the bottom line is, she was honest. She said, well, I didn't think about that.
Yeah, that's good.
And so, you know, we talked about, if you're really going to do this and you're going to cap something, cap the assessed. And so they started thinking about that, and, you know, I've heard that there's been quite a bit of conversation in Topeka about doing that. I don't know if that will actually happen, but like I said, I'm not in favor of capping, but if you're going to cap something, cap the assessed.
Well, that's helpful, and the FEMA, that's a helpful angle. So let's continue that conversation, and maybe as we're forming our legislative agenda, how we can best advocate for your department and the constituents in our county than who do need property tax relief in a big way. So let's continue that conversation as we're developing the agenda.
Sure. And there's other reasons too, so we'll be glad to pipe in.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. That comment you just made about cap the assessed, I don't know if you're, if we're, if we mean the same thing by this. My question is this. This resolution that they're discussing, if I understand correctly, that 4% cap is on an individual property basis.
Yes.
If you didn't, if we didn't do it on the individual basis, if we did it for a jurisdiction, imagine, for example, overall, our assessed value last year grew about almost 9%, right? If that was capped at 4%, what would that mean is, we would actually essentially apply a factor, a correction, if you will, to the increase or the changes, I should say, of four over nine, if that makes any sense.
Yes.
So in other words, we would cap the jurisdictional increase to 4%. That actually, what that would actually do in that case, would it would keep every property relevant to every other property. It would not disconnect one, two houses side by side, one house sells and one house does not sell. It would stop the inequity between neighbors, so to speak, on the same type of home. If the cap was applied at a jurisdictional level, I don't think anybody else has talked about this.
I haven't heard that. That is an interesting way of looking at it. I'd like to play with some numbers and see what that really means.
I think actually, if they're going to go forward, that ought to be something we would actually work for, because what that does then, it keeps everybody, the equity between properties actually is continuing to be respected, if you will. The individual basis is where I have a real problem with this. I think that jurisdictionally, it does actually make, it actually does work. I know there's a technical difference in the way I'm talking about these two things.
Sure.
Jurisdictionally, it actually probably would work. Individually, I think it's a disaster. And so if it's going to go forward, we ought to make, we ought to make that distinction. We ought to develop some data to show the difference.
Let us play with that.
The other thing I'd say is, you know, if one property, say, goes up by a couple of percent, and the property would, without the cap, would go up to, say, more than 4% and it's held down to 4%. On an aggregate level, we're not going to see 4% because one's at 4%, and one's at 3%, one's at 2%, one's minus 1%. The aggregate of all that is something less than 4%. So we would think, when we started estimating, say, well, when inflation's high and we have something greater than 4% inflation, we're not going to see 4% if you do this on an individual basis.
Right.
You do this as aggregate, as a jurisdictional limit, then you can, then you can't, then you could theoretically hit that 4% and actually stay at 4.000%. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying.
That is a huge difference in those two ideas. By the way, I've talked to some legislators about this. No one else has thought of this, that I'm aware of.
Okay.
So it's a pretty big deal, I think, to have that understanding.
Let us look at it.
I would love to work with you on that. Second of all, that was that KSA, the statute for the reappraisal? What was that statute?
That is KSA 791495.
Okay.
It is sort of burned in my memory.
We need to talk about potentially adding that to our platform.
Okay.
I keep talking about what laws we want to see tweaked. That might be one for us to talk about. We need to have a good fiscal note on what that's going to cost without this change. So if the law stays as is, what is that cost to taxpayers? And again, they might like to punish the county for not being in compliance. Maybe that's their viewpoint as to why it is the way it is, but if it's really not our fault and it truly is just a, you know, a taxpayer burden and should be borne at the state level, I think that we can certainly make that argument, so. Two other things. I don't know what slide it is, but personal property accounts by type, there's different types of property, watercraft, individual business, manufactured homes, all of those. Where are personally owned vehicles on this list? Or where are they in your analysis?
Tag and tax is not on here.
Okay, that's interesting, so.
That is not on our tax rule.
Oh, okay. That's good to know that. On this particular list, there's two things that stand out to me. One is watercraft and one is aircraft. If I understand correctly, the state has changed their laws that have really significantly reduced the tax burden on those two types of property. Is that true?
Well, it has reduced, watercraft definitely has reduced the assessment ratio. And then when you're talking about aircraft, I mean, if it's in any way related to business, it's going to be exempt.
Right. And again, if you notice the line there, it went from, in 2019... And that, again, if you notice the line there, it went from in 2019 to 2020, it really jumped up huge. I think that may be a result of that. But, so here's another point I'd make is, tax laws do impact behavior.
Yes.
Um, we, sometimes we, we get glassy-eyed and don't think that there, people make decisions about where to live and, and where to register their property, but they do.
They do.
Tax law does impact behavior.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. It's a big deal. And then finally, um, uh, there's one slide, I don't know where it's at now, I'll probably, can anybody else ask a question? Let me, let me answer my last question or ask my last question in just a moment.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, well, Mark, thanks for the update. I appreciate it. I will support the reclassification when it comes up on the consent agenda. Are the, are you able to start hiring the people that we authorized here recently?
We're ready.
You're ready? Okay. Good. Again, thanks for, for the update. Uh, I appreciate you bringing up the FEMA. I was on the District Advisory Board for Councilman March way back when we had the Halloween flood.
Yes.
And at that point in time, my, the Dell was flooded pretty badly and FEMA bought out a lot of those properties. And the property owners that were bought out were coming to Councilman March saying, hey, they're not paying what it's worth.
Right.
And they quickly learned that, yes, they're paying what it's appraised at. So that was a kind of a why, an eye-opening event for a number of, of people. It's real world, so we have experience here on when FEMA buys out property, they pay the appraised value.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
There is one other thing I'd like to, to say. When it comes to the legislation regarding, uh, capping values, I haven't seen anything in the legis, in any of the proposed legislation that talks about when the economy turns sour. You know, it talks about increasing 4%, but what do you do when things start to tank and your appraised value or, or the cap keeps rising? And it's like, you know, I, I've looked at some of these other states and they have to go back and, and make adjustments and so forth. If they're going to do this, they need to think about some sort of circuit breaker because it, that doesn't make any sense. I think then you're hurting people. You don't want to do that.
And I had a quick question.
Yeah.
So Mark, you had two questions. You referenced in your presentation that your org chart, I know we've talked about this for a couple of years working, but you've worked closely with HR and, uh, and I think the manager had said, confirmed that. So thank you for, for that and what you're doing there. So.
Thank you.
Got a lot of comfort in that. Second one, back to your, is the PVD, you know, we hear this 90% of value? Is that, is that a statute?
Yes.
Is that statutory?
That's statutory.
So how can you, if it's only a 4% cap and you have inflationary times, you, you're going to be way out of whack on the 90%. Is that right?
I'm, I'm wondering how they're going to do all of this compliance stuff because I think they're going to have to rework a whole mess of it.
So they would have to, if you were going to do a 4% cap, they would have to go and change the statutes on your 90% compliance work?
I'm thinking that may very well be the case.
You're thinking it would be, or you think, or you're just listening to what I?
I, 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 I think that may be the case because I've even listened to, to, you know, Senator Tyson saying to, to the director, well, maybe we need to change, you know, the interval for the.
Yeah.
To make sure that people are in compliance.
Yeah.
You know, I think at the time, she thinks it may be too tough and you might want to open up that interval a little bit.
Okay. All right. And then Commissioner Howell. Thank you, Mark, again.
Thank you, Chairman. I actually think I described my formula backwards. I should have said four ninths, not nine fourths. And so with, with respect to that last question that Chairman just asked, um, if for some reason, let's say that, uh, naturally our assessed value without the cap would go up, would normally say go up something more than 4% or, or capped jurisdictionally to 4%. In a year where we have, uh, less than 4% assessed value growth, I think that's a catch-up year potentially. But again, we're driving towards fair market value. If that's still our basis for appraisal is fair market value.
Right.
Then in those years where we're, we're not, we're not really where we need to be because of, uh, past cap, uh, limits, then I think in those years that they, when the assessed value grows at less than 4%, that's an opportunity for us to continue to use a 4% change as far as, for us to be closer to fair market value. Fair market value is our, is our goal. And, uh, so again, I'm not sure the legislation, legislation will be written that way, but I think that needs to be clarified as well. Anyway, I'll just say this, if, if, if the 4% cap is, 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 is on the governing body, not the individual property, that makes more sense to me. So again, on individual property level, you might, you might find variations where someone is, uh, is not close to fair market value and makes some course correction. We've heard some, we've heard narratives this year, well, my property changed by 30%. Well, the reason that happened is because, without even really knowing the details, in the past, your property was probably, was undervalued or it was, it was incorrectly assessed or incorrectly appraised, and so they corrected it this year. And that 30% reflects, if you will, a, a, an attempt to be at fair market, uh, fair market value. And if we've done that wrong, obviously there's an appeal process.
And of course, there's new construction and things of that sort.
Sure, absolutely. And again, they claim, I didn't make any changes to my home and I've been at this other thing for 15 years and all of a sudden it went to 30%. Anyway, um, again, each and every year, we don't look at the history of that property value. We look at what is it today? Is it correct? And if it's not correct, we make whatever necessary change we need to, we need to make in that individual property to be at fair market value. That's my explanation anyway. So there are a couple of slides here which I think are fantastic. These are new slides. Remember this slide you showed us here a minute ago? But it only has on here January through August. I assume this is talking 2023.
Yes.
That's all I wanted to say. Thank you so much. That's my last question. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Any other questions? I don't see any, so I'll make a motion that we receive and file.
Second.
Motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thanks again, Mark, and tell your staff thank you for all the hard work.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Next item, please.
Item J, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting on September 28th, 2023.
Hello, Joe. Welcome back.
Good to be back. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. We're bringing two items before you that are part of the regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts of September 28th. Uh, the first item is medical grade oxygen for various departments. This recommendation is to accept the bid from Lampton Welding Supply Company at the rates listed, including the attachments. And that is to establish contract pricing for one year with four one-year options to renew. And our final item, on-call media buyer for strategic communications. Recommendation is to accept the proposals from Cox Media and J2 Design Solutions LLC. They're also doing business as Lifeboat Creative. It's for the hourly rate shown as well as the additional pricing detailed in the proposals. And that's for a contract period of one year with two one-year options to renew. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have and recommend approval.
Okay. Are there any questions on Joe, on the items Joe's presented? I don't see any. I'll make a motion to approve, um, the Board of Bids as presented. Motion in a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thank you. Thanks again, Joe. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Mr. Manager.
Good morning, Chairman. Commissioner Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items K through P this morning.
Okay. Does the Commission have any questions or comments on any of the items in the consent agenda? I don't see any, so I will make a motion to approve consent items K through P, as in Peter.
Second.
Motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Um, next item, please.
Committee reports.
Committee reports. Anybody have anything to report on the committees, any of the committees they serve on? I don't see any. It's next item, please.
Other.
Anybody have anything under other? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Uh, first of all, I want to thank our fire department and all the fire departments across the state of Kansas. On Sunday, Commissioner Howell emceed, uh, part of the, uh, firefighter's memorial. In addition, my, uh, the actual full-time emcee was our own Stephanie. Uh, so thank you very much. She did a great job with that. Uh, we, they added seven new names to the firefighter's memorial, uh, this year. And, uh, that's a great way of recognizing those that give everything to support their fellow citizens. So thank you to all of our firefighters. We appreciate it very much. And it was an honor to attend along with Commissioner Howell. Uh, we also had, uh, Councilwoman Tuttle there and Councilman Frye that, uh, supported us and the mayor was there. So thank you.
Yeah. And thank you for representing us. Thank you.
Thank you. The other thing I'd like to add is that, uh, we've had a couple of events recently with Senator Moran. Yesterday, Commissioner Lopez and I were able to go out to Yingling and, uh, they have expanded immensely just in the past few months. It's, it's amazing what's going on out, out of Yingling. They now have 14 facilities, I believe.
320,000 square feet.
So it's, it's, uh, fantastic. Uh, I appreciated that Senator Moran invited, uh, Senator, Commissioner Lopez and myself out there. I appreciate it. Uh, the other event, uh, that, uh, on Saturday, Senator Moran held his, uh, annual selection board for the air force, well, for all the academies, but I served on the Air Force Selection Board. Uh, we had about 20 people from across the state of Kansas that, uh, were interviewing these individuals that want to be members of the military. Uh, and what's really, really, really impressive is to listen to these young men and women that want to serve their country and their qualifications. It, uh, I know that our future is in great hands when you get to see the caliber of individuals that are interested in going into, to the academy. And the sad part about it, we interviewed a little over 20 people, uh, that day and, uh, we could select one for the Air Force Academy. Uh, so it, it is very competitive and trying to figure out which one of those 20 that we were going to put the name forward to, uh, the Senator. He was not able to be in town that day. Normally he has lunch with us and, and just talks with each and every one of the candidates. Uh, but because Saturday, there was a lot of things going on, uh, trying to figure out if we were going to have a budget and then whether or not we were going to continue government, why he had to remain in DC. But he came in to us, uh, by Zoom, uh, and, and spoke to us, so I appreciate that. So, uh, I appreciate everything that Senator Moran does. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I wanted to, uh, thank you, thank the Chair for giving me the opportunity to represent the county at that firefighter's memorial. It was a great honor to be able to speak on behalf of the county. And, um, if you've not been to that, I, I would encourage everyone to be aware of this and go next year. Families of fallen firefighters are in attendance, uh, there. Some of them traveled from, uh, other states far away to be at that event. The, uh, the scene of looking at a large crowd of, uh, people who are, have been personally impacted by firefighter losses was duly noted. The flags and the uniforms and the music, um, this is very, very moving. And by the way, I wanted to also mention that Commissioner Dennis says have a family member who had passed, I think it was in 1912, 1912 had lost a family member in his own family and whose name is on, uh, on the memorial wall. So they did read the names of the firefighters and of course, uh, Commissioner Dennis's family member's name was also read. And again, Stephanie did a great job at that. We, I also wanted to recommend, uh, recognize, uh, Chief Tammy Snow was there. She had a speaking part as well as Mayor Whipple, as did, uh, our Chief Doug Williams of our Sedgwick County Firefighter, Fire District Number One. And actually, we had, um, uh, another role, I, I can't remember the gentleman's name right now. I apologize, but we had a captain who presented, uh, the invocation and the benediction as well as the special music at the event. So from Sedgwick County Fire District Number One, he did a tremendous job. Uh, two other things, uh, real quickly, um, there is no Citizens Advisory Board meeting from District Five. Normally would be this Friday, two days from today on the 6th. That has been canceled, so we're not going to have a cab at board meeting this month for, uh, too many conflicts, uh, on members of our cab. And then finally, I am incredibly, incredibly excited, one of my, excited, one of my favorite events of the entire year is the Economic Outlook Conference. We get to, uh, enjoy that tomorrow. This year is, I think is especially important. Jeremy Hill with Wichita State University and many other speakers come together and help us understand what's happening in the economy and kind of, they speculate what's good and what's bad and what's happening, what, what's going on in the future. And I know that this has been very educational in the past. There's a lot of data that's presented, so I'm very excited about the 44th Economic Outlook Conference tomorrow at, uh, at this event. And, uh, I'm, I, I hope that, uh, we can bring back some data that might help us, uh, do a better job, uh, in our, in our roles here as county commissioners. And so with that, I also wanted to share my excitement for that event tomorrow. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. And, uh, a quick shout out, uh, once again to the Wagon Masters for hosting the annual Chili Cookoff. It was a huge crowd downtown and it was a beautiful day and very busy. So Wagon Masters, thank you as always. You do a great job for our community. Any other, under other, any other under other? I don't see any, so next item, please.
Executive session.
Executive session. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're going to do 25 minutes and we'll be meeting upstairs. I will make a motion now. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 25 minutes until 11:15 AM for preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property for the purpose of discussing potential purchase of land and buildings for use by county departments. And that the Board of County Commissioners returns to this room from executive session at 11:15 AM.
At what time?
11:15, 25 minutes. You'd 11:16 now if you like. 25 minutes.
Okay. Okay, 25 minutes, okay. There we go. I'll second that. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Beatty, Commissioner Howell, Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Again, we're going upstairs, so we'll see you up there shortly. Again, we're going upstairs, so we'll see you up there shortly.